Ready?
Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Emmett'sburg Planning Commission. And we shall begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Would everybody please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the love of liberty and justice for all.
At the moment, we see that we have four of the five members of the commission here. Hopefully Bernard will show up, but until that time, Mark, will you kind of fill in for taking minutes?
Yes, sir.
And hopefully we'll see Bernard here in a little while. Anyway, we will proceed. And of course, what does give us four members present, so we do certainly have a quorum. We can make the decisions that were called for tonight. I have no opening statement. Item three on the agenda. Moving on to item number four, disposition of the minutes. The minutes for the last meeting that we held on the 27th of January. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes? Anybody not seen those minutes from that time?
I'll make a motion, the minutes for the January 27th. It will be approved.
Okay, motion has been made to approve those minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Has been seconded. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes 27 January, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five, old business. There's none indicated in the agenda. On to item number six, new business. Item A, Insurance Brokers of Maryland Site Plan. Zach, would you fill us in?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. As the chairman stated, this is the Insurance Brokers of Maryland Site Plan. You all should be pretty familiar with the property. It's been before the board a couple of times. For 600 East Main Street. And this is in the neighborhood, Commercial B1 zoning district. The proposed project consists of the renovation of a little over 2,200 square feet of a former residence and dentist office into an insurance broker and sales office. Interior work to include new fixtures and finishes, wood framing, drywall, tile, trim, paint, millwork, minor structural alterations, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical. Exterior to include a new front addition, vestibule and entrance, new windows, new window openings, new wood deck, and new concrete stair to basement. Site work to include 18 new parking spaces and sidewalks and ramps. The proposed use is consistent with the town's zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. As you can see on our memo, there's the timeline. The application was submitted on January 24th. As is usual, it was submitted to all the different town agencies. We received comment from everyone except with the Vigilant Hoos Company. So on to staff comments and questions. We'll start with number one. So in accordance with Town Code 172090, Commercial District Buffer, where a commercial zoning district is adjacent to a residential zone, a buffer zone will be provided by the commercial property owner as follows. A, a six-foot tall solid fence will be installed and maintained along the property boundary abutting the residential zoning district. B, landscaping will be installed and maintained to screen parking areas so as not to be visible from the roads within the adjacent residential zoning district. However, 172090C allows the planning commission to waive the requirements of this section during a site plan process only for properties in the B1 zoning district if it is determined that the proposed use of the commercial property would not cause detriment to the neighboring residential properties. Basically, the following conditions shall be added to the plan approval if the board tonight determines not to waive Section A and B. If they determine not to, the following comments should be added. A six-foot wall, six-foot tall solid fence shall be added and maintained along the property line, abutting the residential zoning district. The applicant must obtain a zoning permit before installation. Basically, this would be required, if you look on the screen here, to the right, 604 is a residential zoning district, and also to the south of the property. So the six-foot fence would start right at the edge of the corner of the property here, go down south, and then anywhere in this area would be appropriate. Would have to cross like this. For the next condition, if determined by the board to require this, General Note 6 on the plan shall be corrected to read landscaping shall be installed and maintained to screen parking areas so not to be visible from the roads within adjacent residential districts. Basically, additional hedges shall be added, which I do recommend this anyway, on this portion here to the left, and also this portion here. This is residential district in this area, so in order to screen the parking, how the code reads, there should be some more landscaping here and there, and also right here. So I want to kind of stop with that and let the board deliberate deliberate on if they would wish to enforce that code section or give a basically a variance.
Okay. We've been asked to consider the item that allows to the, I should say, to require, as indicated in the ordinance regarding this buffer, a buffer between the business versus residential. We have the wording before us, as indicated in the ordinance, requiring the fencing, the fencing and the landscaping. Those items are currently in the ordinance. We do have the opportunity, so we choose to waive that requirement for this specific proposal. Do I have any discussion or questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before I make any comments, I first want to note that I've known Mr. Phelan for a very long time, and I do buy some of my insurance through his company. I just want to make everyone aware of that. Having said that, I'm pretty good at compartmentalizing, and I think I can render a fair and impartial decision on this, but if anyone thinks I need to be recused, I will certainly consider that.
Okay, does anyone on this commission feel that Mark should recuse himself from this particular question?
I should excuse myself also because I have insurance.
Well, we got. Joe, do you have a feeling about this one way or the other?
It's a small town, and I have no issue with Ms. Rosenstiel and Mr. Long.
Okay, and I concur. I concur with Joe, so there's no objections, so you two may certainly participate in the voting for this particular item. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a few things about this. So it's my understanding if we don't waive the fence requirement, the fence has to go along the property line and not just around the parking?
That's correct, Mr. Long. It would have to start here at the edge. Here's the residence as it sits, the edge going down along the property line, how it reads in the code. There could be some lenience. I know Mrs. Miller, who's present this evening, she lives within five feet of the property line, so I understand that, you know, you don't want to look out your window to a six-foot fence. So there is some leniency. We could, you know, if the board wishes, we could push it up 15 feet. The neighboring property back in 2015 was required to add the fence, and it is approximately 15 feet away from their property line, so there is history with that. Also, just so you could see, here is Mrs. Miller's house, and this is approximately the property line here.
Can I point that out? You're a little too far.
Right.
Your wishes are right on the edge of the property line.
Okay, so it's even closer.
Yeah, I have about 10 feet.
Excuse me, if we're going to have, if we're going to make a comment, please need to come up to the microphone so we can hear you.
Okay, so looking up, just, I'll just finish off these pictures so you guys have some. This is basically the back of the property looking up. Here's where the proposed parking area is going to go. Let me see if I got anything else. There's another picture. So. Would you like me to go back to the site plan, or?
Yeah, I suppose so. I have a few questions and a few comments. So, per the town's code, we're allowed to waive the requirements if we determine that the proposed use would not cause detriment to the neighboring residential properties. So apparently there is one neighbor here. So my question is, do all the adjoining neighbors understand the issue here, or they aware that a fence would be required? And does any neighbor have a concern with this?
From speaking with Mrs. Miller in the past, she made me aware that 604 is not in favor of a fence. Is that correct, Mrs. Miller? And she has a handicap, so she, I don't think can come up to the mic. This is, I forget her name right now.
Ms. Elauer.
Elauer, Elauer, yeah. So other than that, I'm only aware of.
One, there's nobody living in one's house at all. It's absolutely vacant. And the other house, it's only on the corner. And don't forget, there is that 10-foot easement.
From our, from our research, Mr. Chairman, there's a six-foot easement, from our research in the plat, which is fine. Six or 10, yeah.
As if the light pole that's back there, you have the phone, you have the cable, and you have the electric lines. And the trucks have to get back, so they do have to get back there to get to that.
Yes, so.
And 10, eight feet, I don't think is going to be big enough when they get a truck down there. It's not a small truck.
Right.
They use the bigger trucks to get down there.
Legally, just so the boards are aware, legally, they have a six-foot easement. They could not cross that six foot. If they do, they would have to reimburse Mr. Phelan, who's actually in the audience right now. If that would ever occur, if a power line would blow up or.
So.
So to answer your question, I only know of Mrs. Miller, indefinite, that's, she's not in favor.
Not in favor of the fence?
Correct.
Not in favor of the fence.
Okay. So, if we do not require.
Mr. Phelan, you might want to just stand up. They're going to have some questions.
If we do not require the fence, since the fence was to be put along the property line, then I take it that the shrubbery around the parking lot is not in lieu of the fence. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Town staff thought about this a lot, and with the mayor. The mayor decided we're not going to take a stance on this. Basically, we can see it either way. The only concern that we have, and we spoke with our attorney, if the requirements are waived, in the future, if Mr. Phelan would sell the property 10, 20 years down the road, we have no authority to come back in there. So if a 7-Eleven or other convenience store would go there, which is allowed, we have no authority to protect the adjacent property owners from light pollution, noise pollution, any kind of pollution such as that. So if it's waived, it's waived forever with the property.
I would be fine to put up a fence if I was to ever.
Right.
If I was to ever move. I have no problem with a fence or no fence. I'm okay really either way. If the neighbors aren't in favor of that, I'm respectful of their wishes, and, you know, we're pretty much a low, a low maintenance. The earliest somebody might be at the office might be, you know, seven o'clock, and then the latest might be 6:30 or 7:00, somebody leaves. So we have no problem with a fence or no fence.
I have no problem, you know. The problem I have with Jubilee's lights, and nobody, because I have room darkening shades, and I have curtains then on top of that, and I still get the lights from Jubilee. Now, they didn't used to be as bright as they are. And even going parts of the house, I mean, I can't read or anything. I don't need to turn a light on there so bright.
Okay.
But I have, you know, and the other lights, you know, do not bother me.
Zach, let me ask you this. Do you know what the, the background concern was to have this in there in the first place? Maybe I should put it another way. Saying that there should be a six-foot tall fence.
Sure.
Do you know what they really are trying to do here? What are they trying to block? What are they trying to screen? Do you have any idea what the real intent was to say a six-foot fence?
It was my understanding, my predecessor told me, the reason why they passed that ordinance back in 2015 was because the property owners, as you can see here on the screen, they, they, they came to the Board of Commissioners requesting that a fence be put in to block the light, potential light pollution from the Creosote Effects current business that sits there now. So basically, for light pollution and possible noise pollution, which Creosote's extremely low, any kind of light or noise, anything, they basically operate, which Mr. Phelan's going to operate from eight to nine, or, excuse me, eight to 4:30, 5:00 in the daytime, with minimal lights.
But there would be very little either light or noise pollution. Some people say I'm noisy, but I disagree with that.
Sure.
Well, people park in Jubilee parking lot, and I'm referring to your people sitting there, and the lights come over, and a six-foot fence would not even, the ones right on 140 right there, just as you cross, come across the bridge, it doesn't make any difference. I have seen cars sit there with their lights on for 20 minutes and a half an hour, the bright lights coming, and a six-foot fence would not stop that at all, at all.
I'm not sure which, one of the comments on our staff memos, you know, what kind of shrubbery are these? Are these going to be arborvitae's? Do you know?
Whatever you guys are requiring, I had Barrick and Sons, Chad, friend of mine, Chad Barrick, lay it out, you know, to put in.
Yeah. So I mean, one thing we did see very positive with this layout is they're going to be adding some kind of a shrubbery here, so it will eliminate some of the noise, if there's noise, and light pollution, especially if there are arborvitae's. Like I said, I also recommend on the left-hand side here, putting some more plantings, and definitely over here, so if you wish to waive the other requirements.
Okay. The one reason I'm, the reason why I asked that question was, you know, could there be a solution that we varied the height? I was going lower, not higher, you know. Like I said, we know that there are existing four-foot fence in this community already.
Right.
Okay, so thinking, well, maybe this would be more appeasing by having a fence that's already in the community, being that four-foot fence, not a six-foot. But if our intent was to attempt to block the light, then of course, that would not be the solution that we need.
Correct.
Okay. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
No, other than, I know we discussed this at a board meeting before, and the presentation that evening from Ms. Miller and others that are living in that development, I know, were questioning the need for a fence. They didn't seem interested in it. They even questioned the need for Creosote's fence that's already installed. I believe it was called the centerfield wall, the way it hangs out there. I mean, personally, you never know. I just don't foresee, like I said in that meeting, I hope that Mr. Phelan's in that location for a long time.
I will, right?
I don't, I don't foresee something like a 7-Eleven ever going in there due to the lack of space. It just seems like you'd need a little bit more, more room. Nothing like a Rutter's that we already talked about, but I don't see a lot of light and noise pollution with this business in this residential area, personally. And that's my two cents.
Okay. Joyce, do you have any thoughts?
No, I, I don't really like fences, but if, you know, it's not going to interfere with anything, I don't see why we should put it up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask another question of Zach? So you were saying earlier that if we waive the fence for this particular site plan, that we wouldn't be able to require it for a whole different commercial operation, a whole different site plan?
Yeah, I correct myself. That actually, if another organization would come in business, they would be required. My, my, my point was if, which Mr. Phelan's not going to do this, if Mr. Phelan wanted to add, you know, 10 dusk to dawn lights, he could legally, and we couldn't come back. And if Mrs. Miller stated, I can't sleep at night, you know, the noise, they're, they're out, you know, till 12 o'clock at night, there's nothing we as a board and staff can do. That was my point. But yeah, you're correct.
Well, as far as a six-foot fence blocking down the dusk lights, I don't think that.
I just used that as an example.
But we were talking about light pollution. I don't understand how the six-foot fence is going to block any of that type of lighting. It might block car lights if they're pulling in at night, but.
Well, how close her line is, it would block light, in my opinion, because it's five feet away from the property line.
Yeah, okay.
But just devil's advocate.
I mean, personally, for me, I prefer shrubbery rather than a six-foot tall privacy fence like that. It's less harsh. And if we're not hearing much in the way of objections from the community about not having the fence, and it sounds like we're hearing that at least one neighbor is in favor of not having the fence, you know, I'd be fine with waiving the requirement.
A question I have is, could we substitute, instead of having a, instead of requiring a six-foot solid fence, I think Mark was sort of saying, could we instead require landscaping that would provide a certain amount of blockage, visual blockage?
From my reading.
Could we, in other words, could we modify this without eliminating it altogether?
Sure. So what I'm thinking you can do is, you can waive Section A, so the fence, and then keep Section B, and just put stipulations of how you want the landscaping to be. I mean, I'm comfortable how it sits. Staff's comfortable how it sits with, if he puts arborvitae's or something that's going to be, you know, pretty, pretty large, definitely over here on the left-hand side. And since the fence isn't going up, I also recommend right here to block anything from 604, going over to 604. But if you feel more landscaping's required down here, that you're, you know, more than, I think B definitely covers that.
My concern about that would be that it would, eventually, as it grows, it would be more of a fence than what Mrs. Miller would care to, you know, it would completely block things out for her, you know, any kind of Leland Cypress or any of that kind of thing. It would completely block it, so she'd have no view at all.
One thing I am working on right now, which will come to the board at some point, we're going to be adding, hopefully adding some requirements for buffer yards. So for example, for every so many feet of commercial line, you're going to require so many evergreen trees, street trees, et cetera. So it's not, I don't think it's a bad ask, you know, I think it's going to be.
Well, are those three trees right up against my property, they're pine, I mean, yeah, pine trees, are those three going to stay there?
Yes. Unless, I mean, we just, we just took down the walnut trees because they were, you know, kind of a hazard, people tripping on, you know, twisting ankles, and we had to clean it up to be able to make room for the parking in the rear. But yeah, there were no intention of doing.
How far does that parking lot come back? I'm trying to visualize that.
I believe it's 40 feet.
That'll be past the driveway that's there now, correct? More towards me.
We'll be.
No.
Yeah, so it would be a little bit closer to you, absolutely.
Yeah.
Here's the existing driveway.
Oh, okay.
So it's actually going to be before.
Before that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, Mr. Chair? What makes this look like a commercial property in my mind is mostly the parking. Otherwise, the house itself looks like any other house, except maybe the new vestibule going out front.
Right, right.
So in my mind, blocking the parking is the main concern, and rather than, I don't know that it's that necessary to put the shrubbery around at the property line. I would think that just putting it around the parking area is more or less like it has here, and then the additional areas that Zach pointed out seems reasonable to me.
Well, you aren't going to be there that late normally, because even in the winter time.
So are you, perhaps you're suggesting that if we were to impose item B, the wording there is, it talks about the visibility from the roads within the residential, and perhaps that that could be a little bit changed, so we're talking about more than just the roads not being visible, but the adjacent residential properties.
Correct.
Well, I believe, I believe that comment would cover this requirement, because technically you could see the road from Emmett Garden Drive here. You could see the back here in the rear parking lot. So I think this would be covered, and this is definitely, First Avenue's definitely covered, so.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments or questions?
I like the shrubbery idea.
And Mr. Phelan already has a good bit of shrubbery on the site plan, so.
Right, that's what I was getting at, that.
It's not like, yeah.
What's already shown there, it looks fine to me, and then in addition to that, you know, cover the other spots that Zach was pointing out, to cover the remaining areas would be satisfactory with me.
I certainly like that better than a wall.
Would somebody like to please make that into a motion for this item? Remember, our, our issue is whether or not to waive the requirement as written in the ordinance.
I'll take a crack at it.
Okay.
Are you ready, Joe?
Go for it, Mark.
Yeah, go for it.
I move that we waive the requirement for the fence, the six-foot fence, and in lieu of that, require shrubbery around the parking areas as per the site plan, plus any additional areas that need to be screened so that the parking areas are not visible from the streets and/or adjoining properties.
I think that makes sense, as long as you know it's 1720090A only, not B.
Yeah, we would waive A.
A only.
But keep B.
Keep B, yep.
It would be, that's, that's your, the motion has been made, I'll paraphrase pretty much what you said, Mark. Motion has been made to waive item A of this ordinance, but to impose item B with modification that landscaping, control of visibility from the roads and/or adjacent property, adjacent properties. Would you say that covers what you're looking for? Okay, that is the motion made by Mark. Is there a second to that motion?
Okay, go ahead. I'll second it.
Okay, second has been made by Joyce. Any last comments or questions to the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Okay, we got that now, Jack?
Yep.
Zach?
That works.
All right.
And for the, under the comments, again, I'll skip number two and three unless you want to talk about that. And basically, number four, provide a justification, this is, the code requires this, for the proposed 10 extra parking spaces for a 2,250 square foot building, only eight are required. So per our code, the applicant has. So per our code, the applicant has to provide justification, and the planning commission may grant an increase in the number of required parking spaces.
Okay, now Zach, as I heard you to say, the ordinance says that eight are required. Does it also say that eight is the max? Does it also say that?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So per their square footage, it states that, you know, they're, what the square footage is, 2250 equals eight parking spaces required. And that's the max, too.
And that's also the max.
If they want to go nine, 10, 11, you have to receive planning commission approval.
Okay. Everybody understand?
Yes.
That it's up to us to decide whether or not to allow additional spaces beyond the eight that's required. Any comments you'd like to make of that before we take this any further?
But the only comments I would make is that the parking spots up front are for, are theoretically for clients and then for a, which include also a handicap area. And then the ones in the back purely are for my staff in the office.
And staff does not, we're fine with this. We have no problem. Mr. Phelan's been very green throughout this whole process. Currently proposing a pervious asphalt, depending on if the county would approve it, so.
Is that similar to what Seton Center has?
Exactly, pretty much, yep.
How about the drainage coming off of that? Into my property.
Excuse me, we need to have, control this a little bit, please. If you're going to want to make a comment, you need to do so at the microphone so that it can be recorded through the system.
Can we ask some questions of Mr. Phelan before we get into public?
Yes.
So, how many employees do you have?
So I have, there are 12 offices in there. And so every day, there would be a staff of 10 that's in, that's in the office.
So that's your justification for why you want that many parking spaces?
Yeah, exactly.
They will be full-time employees?
Yes.
Okay. How would a client know which parking lot to be, to go in?
Well, the easy access and my signage will be right off of the main, what Emmett Gardens Drive there. It will only be staff. And then I have several offices, and so I was hoping, you know, I need sometimes to have all, everybody come to one office. And so then, you know, at that point, for meetings in my conference room and that type of thing. So they would, I guess, in answer to your question, because it, just because of signage and the way that it sits there, it would be, you know, it's, I think it'll be self-explanatory. Not that I would mind if somebody came in back and then walked up front. I have no problem with that. It's certainly not as easy, you know, wouldn't be as easy to do.
Okay. How would a person who parks in the back happens to be a client rather than an employee? Is there something going to be able to?
That white area is a...
Show them how to get to the front door.
Right. You would, we have an interest in the, in the rear. So on the rear of the brick house, what used to be, you can see there, it's kind of a garage door and then a regular man, a human door. So it will, the basement is finished, this actually is, the whole, the whole basement will be finished as well, other than a large storage area. So we have three offices in the basement and then nine upstairs.
So they would have to use the stairs?
Correct.
If they really, their intent is to get up to the first floor?
That is correct.
They would have to use the stairs?
Yes.
And there's no handicap accessibility then?
That is correct. The handicap accessibility, we'll have ramps and all that in the, in the front.
How about the parking in the back needing to have a handicap space?
I defer to Zach on that. I guess we have one that we have to put in, and so we will, of course, comply with that.
And having one needing an accessible route from that space to the building, how will, how will you construct that?
Well, that's a good question. I guess in this case, we would have, so when you can see, there's a, yeah, there's...
You want me to answer?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I spoke to Mr. Phelan about this, I think, last week, and I was speaking with his surveyor engineer. And what I'm recommending is they put a park, the handicap parking space, these two spaces right here, where number five, and this will be, one of the comments on our staff memos, this has to be a five-foot wide compliant graded, you know, 2% grade, less than 2% grade going up to this deck. So it will be ADA compliant, from the back. And from the front. He's going to have to put a ramp here to this deck. And that's, that's something that Frederick County is going to require him to do. That's something we don't require at the town level. We just require the parking spaces. So this will be a ramp going up to the deck, to the first floor.
And that deck is going to be at floor level?
For, to the...
To get into the building?
It should be.
Yes.
Yep.
Will it not be a step up?
It should be a full ramp.
Well, I mean, right at the door, the door into the building, would there be a step up?
There's a, you mean this side door here?
Yeah.
There should not be a step. There should be...
Well, just for the rain not to come in the door.
I'm thinking about somebody in a wheelchair coming up there to get in that door.
I mean, I...
But what if there's no space in the front? They'd have to go in the back, right?
Well, it's the ADA spot up front is where they'd go. I've never had two handicap people in my office.
Well, yeah, but we'd have to, we're going to have an ADA space in the back. Right?
Right. Yeah, Mr. Phelan's just going to have to make sure that this is a ramp going up to this deck and make sure that the wheelchair can successfully go in, which Frederick County will enforce.
Yeah, okay.
So it's all good.
Okay. All right. We kind of got sidetracked there. I think we're still back at the issue of
Oh, yeah.
Additional spaces.
And staff, we don't, we're fine with that.
Okay. All right. Any other comments about the issue of allowing an additional 10 spaces from what's required in the ordinance? Any other thoughts, comments, questions?
No, I had some questions, but they were addressed.
They were addressed.
I understand. It's like, it's like your regional headquarters, so to speak, with your conference room.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
I did want to touch on the, if we're finished with that, eventually, if we, if we could get to the more talk on the impervious, or not the, the pervious parking.
Okay, we'll get to that. Let's take care of the number of spaces. Okay. Any, any comments from Mrs. about that?
That was one of mine about getting back in, what was the kitchen?
The kitchen of all, yes, exactly.
See, how would they get from
Yes.
There up to there? That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Yep.
And you've answered the question.
All right. Okay, any last thoughts about the number of parking spaces? If not, do I have a motion? To approve or disapprove the additional 10?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed increase in the number of required parking spaces from eight to 18.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve the additional 10 spaces. And that motion has been seconded. Any last thoughts, questions, comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, oppose, motion carries. Okay, take care of that issue. Okay, Zach?
Sure. So we'll continue on. There are a significant amount of comments. Just, a lot of them are typical comments, you know. So I'm not going to go over every single one unless you want me to. So we'll go through a couple of them that's most important. So I'm going to go to page four, because the first page is just general, simple notes about setback requirements and everything else. So number eight, the front parking lot appears to be less than 10 feet away from the right-of-way. So he basically just, he might have to remove one of these parking spaces or add another one over here because it's too close to the right-of-way. So Mr. Gauss, who is his surveyor, will have to verify where exactly the right-of-way line is, and then we'll see if it can fit with, within the code. Next, we just spoke about this, per American Disabilities Act, where one parking facility provided on site, the number of accessible spaces provided at the site shall be calculated according to the number of spaces for the parking facility. Basically, what that means is, since he has two parking facilities, he has to have two ADA parking spaces. Number nine, the accessible parking spaces shall also be van accessible. Van parking spaces shall be 132 inches wide and 60 inches with a 60-inch access aisle. So what that means is this access aisle here, it's basically a sidewalk. It has to be five feet instead of what it's showing is four feet. Access aisles shall be situated so that it is on the passenger side. So this access aisle here is on, showing the left. Usually, it's people that are coming in a disability van are going to be coming as passengers. So the federal law states that it has to be on the right-hand side, easy fix. Go down to 16. Both parking lot access aisles should be extended to provide a paved backing area for vehicles to facilitate turnaround. Has, how it sits, it's going to be very difficult for this van to turn around and come out to East Main Street. So this is going to need to be extended just a little bit. Probably four or five feet, so they can safely back then and then go out to the street. Number 18, label the depth of the parking spaces one through four. Again, these are showing about a 16-foot length. Per code, it has to be 20-foot long. On to the next page, page five. Number 20, the plan shall identify location of garbage collection points in accordance with Town Code 174850B12. Dumpsters must be enclosed and screened with solid six-foot fencing and landscaping. Are you going to have a dumpster or are you going to have just regular trash cans? So basically, all you need to show is on your plan where you're going to store the trash cans. And if it's just regular trash cans, they don't have to be screened. So, so I'll eliminate that comment. So that comment will be eliminated. 32, as we spoke about earlier with Ms. Miller, show any easements existing or proposed. And an easement running along the property line shall be a minimum of six feet and shown on the plan. So there must be a six-foot wide easement shown on the entire property line. Is exactly what Ms. Miller stated regarding the phone and the electric lines. Number 38. I provided, I have a calculation sheet for water and sewer. So I provided that to the contractor, just waiting for him to get back to me on this. So the applicant shall submit to the town the proposed number of water and sewer fixtures. The town planner has provided a fixture chart to the applicant's contractor. The property is currently allowed 15 fixtures for water, which is one tap, and 15 fixtures for sewer. The applicant shall pay the current tap fee rates if the fixture counts are in excess of the number stated in the previous sentence. I'm not sure how many urinals, et cetera, you're going to have. So if it goes over 15, you'll have to pay a little bit extra fees. So once your plumber gets that back to me, I can eliminate that comment.
Okay.
Nope, still going.
Okay.
Got two more. Since the land disturbance is over 5,000 square feet, they must obtain an approval of erosion and sediment control plan, which I believe the contractor is working on as we speak. And also, since it's over 5,000 square feet, they must just obtain approval for a stormwater management plan. Going off, I believe, what Joe's going to ask, the impervious parking, Mr. Phelan has agreed to do ass, impervious asphalt. So what they do is they have so many inches of stone, you know, so many inches of gravel compacted. Basically, they just have to get that approved through the county. It's going to be a simple approval. Mr. Phelan's surveyor doesn't believe that's going to suffice. I beg to differ. I believe that the county will accept that. If they don't, we spoke, instead of doing impervious asphalt, they'll do a little rain garden probably in the back here where they have room and where the slope is perfect. So to address Mrs. Miller's comments, you will have zero stormwater coming off this property because he's required to have it all managed by either the impervious asphalt, which will soak right into the ground, or going to a rain garden on the property.
What are you referring to, a rain garden? I'm trying to remember.
So in front of Dollar General, they have that little, little pond, but it's always dry. Basically, that's exactly what it is. So that's, that's the summarized portion. So the board, if you want to see a cleanup plan next month, you can table the plan and we'll get, Mr. Gauss will clean the plan up with all of our conditions. And the board can review a clean plan, or you can approve it as is with conditions.
Okay, so we've got several options here, folks. With the large number of conditions that are being recommended to be attached to a decision that we would make, we can simply table the decision to be made regarding the site plan, seeing that there are a great many conditions that would be a part of that. If you would prefer to do it all tonight, we could continue and go through all these items, knowing that we're not going to actually see these on the drawing at this time. Or you have an option to just simply deny and suggest that it be denied because the plan is insufficient. It has a numerous number of conditions that makes it impossible for us to, to approve it tonight. Got several ways we can go on how to proceed tonight with this site plan that we see. Are there thoughts or questions regarding the way we proceed?
So there's a fair amount of construction going on right now. I assume that all of that's been approved. So if we were to table this for now, that, and ask for another plan to come back, how does that affect the ongoing construction?
So right now, the only construction that's going on is a sewer line being replaced. One of the conditions, as you probably remember reading, is replacing the sewer lateral because this subdivision's from the 40s and it still has the old cast iron pipes. So we're concerned with leakage. And they agreed, and they already, I believe they already put the pipe in. So that's what you see, the construction you see in the backyard. They do not have approval to start construction on any of the parking spaces at this time. So it's just, as you see, it's just basically what they're doing is they're digging out some windows here. They're going to put some new windows in the back for some more lightage. Everything interior has been approved. So it's not, to answer your question, it's not going to affect their, their progress. Because I don't think you're anywhere near the parking construction at this point. And if you table it, we're going to have to probably come back in two months because they're, they're going to need some time to address the, the comments. And staff's going to have some, to re-review the comments, so. Would that affect construction, two months?
So...
Be April.
No, I think that should be followed.
Okay. End of April.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other thoughts, Joe?
No, I'm assuming then if we do table it for two months, then a lot of these conditions obviously would go away. So it'd be a lot cleaner. Be a cleaner site plan as per the conditions. I guess it's just a little bit more than the rudders one we saw a few months ago, condition-wise.
That's true.
I, you know, I, either way, I'm not determined one way or the other if we table it or just proceed tonight, knowing full well that these changes are assumed they're going to happen, you know, and everything would be cleaned up. So I have no, I'm comfortable either way. I, I'm sorry, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other.
Okay.
So that's not much help, I know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So basically, basically if you would approve it tonight, you're allowing staff to administratively review it and approve it once it's cleaned up. Mr. Chairman would review it at the end, give his signature with the mayor. It's totally up to what you're going to do.
Joyce, do you have any thoughts?
No, I'm nice with Joe. It's either way.
Okay.
Whenever you...
I myself would prefer to see a new plan that would be more complete and have an opportunity to address the items. Let me ask this. Have, have, have these comments or these suggested conditions, have they been given to you before tonight?
Yeah, so...
Oh, yeah. I sent it probably...
So you, you're familiar with pretty much all these 44 items?
I have to admit that I, I'm not familiar with all of those items, but certainly, you know, anything that needs to be complied with, we're, we're, we're gonna be a, you know, good neighbor to, a good participant here within the town and certainly a good neighbor.
Okay, because I guess what I'm wondering is, is there something on this list that you're really gonna have a problem with? So when we, when we see the plans again in, in two months, these concerns are not gonna be a concern anymore. You will have taken care of them.
Well, that's correct. I, I would just add, Zach, I've been, you know, very forthright with him, is that if we do have some stormwater management, I, I'm certainly in, I like just for the ability to remove snow and the, the. Impervious is kinder and gentler in that regard than what is the pervious. It doesn't look like it's finished, I'm concerned about its longevity, you know, so I can't do both, if you know what I mean. If I'm, if the county's gonna require that there be some sort of water garden, then I will choose to put in impervious.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
If, if they're okay with that, I'm fine with the pervious, but I certainly don't want any water to go on Mrs. Miller or anybody else for that matter. You know, we'll make sure to, it, it's, the water table, I will tell you, just as we've kind of had to be digging around there, the water table is really up in that area to begin with. You can hardly stick a shovel in the ground and not have water. It's, you know.
Two sump folks running in.
As we speak, probably, yes. So we are putting in two crocs in ours as well. Two sump crocs, which there were, there had been none, but the water is absolutely an issue there.
May I make a comment? Maybe I, I, when it rains, and this is even before all this was going. Where the two trees right at the corner of my property, there, maybe to where the N in north. You need a boat, literally. Because my property sits, it sits a little higher, but. 140 is higher, and it all comes down. And because when I walk, when I walk, I walk uphill to the 140 and have to come down. It all drains downhill. And right there is where it seems to sit, right around those two trees.
Well, I will tell you, I believe, full-heartedly, that once this is added, either pervious parking or rain garden, all of this is going to be removed, the existing asphalt, so. And right now, the house rainfall goes right into the grass and then probably swells up all down here. This will be actually piped into either this basin underneath where the stones are, or it's gonna be into the rain garden. So I would put my best dollar, I would bet that this is gonna improve greatly for you.
Well, I know that there, the downspouts and all, nothing works.
Exactly.
Really not there.
Yep, so that's my point. Basically, it's all gonna be captured then, so I think it's gonna definitely improve your basement problems, hopefully.
Okay. Mark, do you have any last thoughts or comments?
Well, I know there's a lot of conditions here, but if we were to approve this with all the conditions this evening. I, I have enough faith in the staff that they could administratively assure that it's taken care of. Having said that, it would be nice to see it cleaned up a little bit, and if there's not going to be any severe damage done to your construction schedule, if, if we table this tonight, I'd, I'd prefer to see a cleaned up plan. And, and review it again, you know, with all the conditions taken into account.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
You okay with that?
Okay.
I mean, but, Chris is on board. Chris is on board with getting what you need fixed.
Yeah, I'll send, I, I sent Chris this earlier in the month, but I'll send it to him again, just basically know what the board agreed to.
Okay.
And do you know when your groundbreaking's gonna be? Or not groundbreaking, the actual grand opening, I'm sorry.
And if I get help from you guys. Really, I'm not sure, certainly the situation that I'm in, you know, the bondholders or friends and clients where my current office is, so there's not a real rush from that perspective. However, you know, now I have, you know, mortgage and rent, so it's, my hope would be that by 6:1 is what I was hoping.
Cool, okay. So we're in, we're in time. So it wouldn't be bad to table it.
Okay. Very good. So, do I have a motion? That we table? A decision on the site plan? Until it is. Resubmitted to us. That will address many of, if not all of the 44 or thereabout, conditions that we have been shown tonight. Do I have a motion? To, to do the table?
So Mr. Chair, I'll move that we table the site plan before us for this evening. And ask that. Many of these conditions that are shown here. Be indicated on the, the new site plan and brought back to us at the earliest possible time.
Motion has been made to table the decision on the site plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been seconded. Any last comments, questions? Anybody? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimous. So we will table until it is resubmitted to us at another time. So, that takes care of that item, number six. Item seven, any other comments from the public? None, moving on. Next meeting. Zach, when do you see us having our next meeting?
So I believe Mr. Gauss could have it done by, I'd say, within the next two weeks. So I'm assuming, and I need 30 days for review, so I'm gonna say April 27th. Unless I send you an email otherwise to determine.
Don't, you don't see one coming in March?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
No meeting in March.
At this time.
That's right. Could change, I suppose.
I guess it could change until Friday.
Okay. April 27th to 27th would be the likely next meeting. Very good. Is there now a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion made by Joyce, is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe, second it. Meeting is adjourned.